Hi Katie.
Hi Aaron.
Is there a reason we need to be quiet?
No.
We're waiting. You don't have to be quiet.
May as well talk. Hi Katie.
Hi Aaron. We're waiting. But you don't have to be quiet.
May as well talk.
That's why.
Okay, talk now.
Okay, we're talking now.
There you go.
Okay, so we are at six oh one P M. Are we ready to call it to order Julie?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mark Carlton, Erin Norman.
Dan Murphy.
Katie Missfeld. Okay, one point two, but. I pledge allegiance to the.
To the United States of America. And to the very public who wishes to stand. One nation under.
Thank you, everyone. One point three, agenda review and approval. Dr. Long, is there any update?
I have no additions, other than we included some documents that weren't in your packet that are on the agenda. The new school board policies and the assurances for it.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Aaron. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two point O correction approval or two point one correction approval of the regular meeting minutes from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, hopefully, everybody read through this already. Do you have any changes to this?
Make a motion, we approve the merits of the. Presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three point O communication report, three point one, uh, the board member interviews.
So we are, I'm really pleased to let you know that we've had two applicants for the school board position. Um, the board at your last meeting discussed how, how and when to fill this position. We advertised out um, and we're grateful to have a couple of people who reside within our district who meet all the requirements to be on the board. Um, the board had asked for us to generate some questions that you might just have them respond to. I think the intent tonight, because this is a public meeting, not only here, but also being live streamed. That's the community, um, uh, your constituents could, uh, hear from the two applicants. And that then you would come back next month and make your vote. Um, it may very likely be that you hear some additional things that might cause you to choose one candidate or the other from constituents. Um, and it, it may be there any number of things could come up, but I think that sort of response to that, letting the voters know who's going to be on the board. This is a a, a nine-month appointment, maybe eight months. My math is going about on me now. Um, it's through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This position and one other position, like the position currently occupied by Mr. Warman um, are scheduled to be on the ballot in May. And so, um, certainly if anyone else is out there, did I get their application? And when it comes to that time, there's a process to put your name out there, but we appreciate always when people are willing to step into the gap. Um, and so I guess I would propose that we, um, that the board go through the seven questions you have here. It's up to you. If you just want to have one person ask the question. Um, however, you want to do that, I like this. I would refer to you as the board chair. Um, and then the other question is, is would you like the person to sit out there in Netherlands? Or they could actually come sit here and I'd be glad to scoot over and let them be comfortable. I have questions here. So turning it back over to you.
What, what would you guys prefer? Stay out there or come up here?
No, they won't come.
I mean, I'm fine here, but.
Maybe they can be seen by the public.
I think you're my concern.
What? Maybe one at a time. Uh, maybe you want to interview one and then the other. They got the questions before they came in here. And did you need something else? Just to make sure we get to the right topics. Um, and actually I give them the more comfortable seat, which would be this one right here. So.
Yeah, I said when two minutes ago. Chris, would you like to go first? Are you okay with that?
Someone can do that.
You got your questions there, Chris? You're good. I do, I do. I got it up here.
Uh, one for.
I suggest each board member picks a question to ask. Each candidate, are you guys okay with that?
A couple can ask too.
That plan sound okay, you guys?
I think so. Sounds fine. I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead, Aaron.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, Chris, and why you're interested in filling the open school board seat.
Thank you, board member. And greetings to the board and to the administrators tonight, and thank you for having me here. Um, I am a local business owner. I've been a licensed building contractor for forty years. And I own and operate a business in the Medford, Will Valley area. Um, I have been a teacher in the school district for seven years and we, I just retired this last June. I, uh, I, uh, did that with, with, with some regrets. It was a bittersweet moment to, to leave the teaching position. But I, I feel that I can better serve the school district possibly from the position of the school board or as a as a project manager for development of facility, construction of natural resource center. Um, my wife and I live about five minutes from town, ten minutes from town. We started building our home in nineteen ninety-three. And we've lived there happily ever since for nearly thirty years. And I enjoy the, the community. I enjoy the environment and, uh, enjoy the, the company. Long and short of it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Aaron. Does anybody else want to go next?
Yeah, I, all, uh, so you, you've worked here, you taught here, you've interacted with students, teachers, parents, the whole shebang. Uh, number three. What do you see as opportunities or challenges here?
Um, there are many of both. Um, opportunities. Uh, we as a small school district and as a rural school district have opportunities that you don't see in other larger school districts. Um, having worked for seven years to help develop the natural resource center, I see the natural resource center as one of our biggest opportunities for us to be unique in how we teach here in the school district. We, uh, we have a, a landscape of learning out there that provides us with, with numerous opportunities. Um, because we have a, a small community, we have a very, uh, tight-knit community too, where people know each other and we're able to look out after each other. We're able to identify when there are, uh, challenges a little bit in a, in a little more easy fashion than in a larger school district where people are not quite as knowledgeable about who the players on the landscape are. Uh, our challenges are not unlike most other school districts here. Um, um, economic issues challenge us, enrollment challenges us. Um, they go kind of hand in hand. I think if, uh, we do what we can do to increase enrollment, that, uh, some of the economic challenges will be dealt with. Um, we have challenges with, uh, keeping teaching staff here long enough to, to find the buy-in that they could if they stayed longer. And there's a number of reasons why teaching staff move along or, or, or find someplace else to teach. But, uh, I'm, I'm going to keep it short.
Sure.
Those challenges.
Number four, Chris, as an individual school board member, how would you handle a situation when the board takes a position which you do not agree with?
Hmm, well, I know this board very well and, and I know this board is always open to suggestions and, uh, if the board started out disagreeing with some point or some idea I had, I would hope that I can be convincing and persuasive enough to um, convince the board to to take another look at that. Um, I would accept the board's decision, however, on, on anything that, uh, the majority decided. It's, uh, it's the law and, uh, live by the law. So I would work with, with the board to to get past whatever disagreement we had.
Okay, I'm going to ask you the last question.
Okay.
How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
Well, I think that, um, we're all blessed by school board members coming in and volunteering their time. Uh, yeah, once a month or in whatever other capacity that school board members contribute. Um, I see myself be more effective and most effective by following through on ideas I might present to board. So if I come up with something that requires manpower to see it through, um, I'd more than likely will be some of that manpower or person power, whichever, uh, is appropriate. Um, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm in this for the long haul, so um, I, I back up my, my words with, with my, my effort.
Do you guys want to go through the last three questions or?
Like there was a couple that they were a little more difficult to answer there.
Uh-huh.
But I'm not afraid.
Yeah, so number five. Uh, if you were approached by an irate parent, teacher, staff member with complaints about a school district issue or employee.
Hmm. What would I do? Well, first I'd make sure it's not a medical emergency and, uh, irate parents or people, you know, they might be displaying some other issue that, uh, might not be obvious. So I'd make sure that we were dealing with something that required law enforcement to immediately intervene. But typically what I would do is, um, I would ask that person to consult the superintendent or the principal. It's, uh, being a school board member, I, I think there's only so much I can say or do. Um, I, I think that it should be handled by the administrators at the, at the school when we have someone who's at the point of being irate. Um, it, it, it's helpful to try to defuse the situation immediately, but sometimes that can go real bad real quick, so. Don't want to make it sound like I'm kicking the can down the road, but I really think it's appropriate that somebody else handle irate parents and staff.
Um, I'll do number six. How would you handle disagreements with other school board members and the superintendent?
Don't remember that there ever has been one. Um, but then I haven't been in all the school board meetings. So I don't have an example of how it has been handled. Um, I, I, I believe that everything's open for negotiation. Every, every, everything can be discussed. Um, I would hope that it, the disagreement never has to reach, uh, a stage where people are raising their voices. How would I handle it? Probably step back if that's what was required.
We have one more, number two. Does anyone want to ask that one?
We kind of did the number one, but.
Okay, so we can skip that. Are you guys happy with that?
Much, aye, good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
By the way, I come with my own Robert's rules.
I, I was looking at your copy.
And I want to say I have been on boards before. One of the boards that I was on was the, uh, Jackson County Home Builders Association Executive Board of Directors. I was secretary and I was also president. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Bonnie.
Hello.
Same questions.
Same questions.
Tell us a little about yourself and why you're interested in filling the open school board seat.
I am Bonnie Freeman. I have lived here in Utah Falls for about twenty-three years now, um, maybe close to twenty-four. Um, I have two kids that are in this school. Um, I have a seventh grader and a first grader, so I am a mom, but I'm also a graduate from here. Um, I, uh, I love being involved with any school activities that we have. Um, I do, I work full-time. Um, but I'm fortunate enough to be able to work from home. Um, so I'm here always unless it's a sports game, then I'm usually there, but, um, I just try to show as much support for the kiddos that I can.
Well, would, uh, same thing we asked Chris, what, what do you see as some of the opportunities and challenges in the district? So you have kids here at both the middle school and elementary, it looks like. So you get a direct feed
Yeah.
on what's going on, which Katie, I guess you do too.
I have one in all three.
Okay. But none of us have that, so. Um, so I guess with that feed, what opportunities and cha-challenges do you see with this, this district?
I feel like the opportunity is being a parent on the board, um, because having the feedback from other parents, um, communication with other parents that I can bring to the board, um, uh, I feel like I could be a strong voice for our kids and the community members. Um, challenges, I would definitely say being on camera for all of the meetings. Um, not my favorite, but I do have to do through quite a bit with work, so it's just something I'll deal with. Um, I, uh, I feel like some of the challenges, you know, different, difference in opinions, um, but it's also something that I feel like we have such a strong word that we would be able to work through. Um,
Yeah, true. Bye Bonnie.
That's okay.
Do you want to go next, Dan?
Dan just pointed to me. As an individual school board member, how would you handle a situation where the board takes a position which you do not agree with?
Um, well, there's a reason there's spite of us on the board. Um, definitely take it as a professional, in a professional manner, um, communicating with each other and, you know, we all have the same goal together, even if we express it differently, um, individually. Our ultimate goal is for the children of our school.
Good.
All right, number five, what would you do when approached by an irate parent, teacher or staff member with complaints about a school district issue or employee?
Um, with what I do now, I work at a wheelchair company, um, and it's not always, uh, happy customers that you get on the phone. So I am actually very good at de-escalating situations, um, in a calm manner. Talk to the individual that is upset, try and calm them down first and foremost, offer to set up a meeting with them, offer to, um, invite them to our board meetings, whether it is on, you know, through film or if they, you know, come to an agreements where they are calm, that they can come and see what we discuss and what we do.
Um, how would you handle disagreements with other school board members or the superintendent?
Um, I really do feel like disagreements, um, are, are probably expected to happen. We're all individuals with our own opinions. Um, but again, like I said, I kind of, I, well, I kind of answered it in the first part, but, um, just working together with each other. I mean, even if it's a different opinion than mine, it doesn't mean it's the wrong opinion.
Uh, number seven, how do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, positive changes for the students? I'll, I'll emphasize on students.
Um, hearing them, letting them know, like, that their, their opinions are heard by us as an administration. Um, figuring out. Cool, goodness. Um, yes, listening to them for sure. Um, it, we, when I was in high school, we actually had, um, leadership class, you know, the class president, even junior high. We had class president, um, vice president, secretary, everything like you do here. Um, those officers in the classroom were actually invited to these board meetings once a month. And I think that that would be so beneficial to have those officers, especially with our junior high and high school, have those officers attend our monthly meetings, um, where they can have the discussions with their classmates and bring it to our meeting to give us feedback.
Good job, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Can I have any help you want to add?
Um, for me? No. No, I appreciate your guys' time, um, and setting us up and the opportunity to be able to interview with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just would point out to the board that no matter what, you have potentially two members for a budget committee meeting in the spring, so we'll just throw that out there.
And, and really, we appreciate both your interest in the position and we, we are going to wait till November to make the decision. Just that gives the public watching an opportunity to comment because it is an elected position, so. Does that work for everyone? Okay. Okay, three point two, Utah Falls Charter School Natural Resource Center, Mr. DeCarlo.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, right. Long. So I was actually able to make it into the board pack at this time, got my information to Julie on time, so just going to kind of highlight some of the key pieces in there, so. And it wasn't actually intentional how I set this up until I looked at when I was done, the three different sections about different groups being involved out of the N R C. So that's kind of the theme right now. So starting with the high school where I'm, uh, located. So all of the core classes for science, so grades eight through eleven, because both pairs do not have science, voted to attend the natural resource center at least one day a week for science instruction. A couple of them would like more days than that, but I told them I also have to maintain my own sanity. And so at this point, it's one day a week. Um, one of the areas that they've most enjoyed using, there's the maker space, which is what's in that picture there, which is down at the opposite end of the hatch house from where the big door is. So it'd be the eastern end of the hatch house. And we had some shuffling around and so our elective classes now ended at forty-two students between seventh and eighth periods that are out there. And now it's forty-one, we just have one student. Um, unenrolled.
By the way, we have sixty-six students, so that means, uh, but I'm trying to do the math, almost two out of three students are down there.
Which is really exciting for me. It's something that I have been really, really excited to see that it's not just students wanting to be there a little bit, but wanting to come down day after day and do some different work. So there's also a handful of students who come down and take a yoga class with Ms. Brown for math.
Yoga?
Yep.
Oh, my goodness.
So they do yoga in the orange house. Um, but it's definitely been entertaining. My students try to stay away from the windows so they aren't blocking the yoga students.
We can offer that for board members. Yeah, maybe we should do that before our meetings.
Thank you.
Um, she'd probably lead you down at the N R C in the nice setting. Um, we also then, so I've listed out some of the different projects that students have worked on. Moved nearly a hundred wheelbarrows full of wood chips, cut a new trail spur, and actually now they just started on a second one. Cleared out another potential meeting space for classrooms, repaired five bicycles from which the bicycles were, were down there. Built a mini rock wall, it's about a hundred feet in length. Plored it about twenty pounds of nails and screws and began some construction work to improve safety in the mini maker space. So one of the safety concerns that Dr. Long and I identified this summer was that there were holes in the floor when the raceway went through, and so they've been able to build using materials on site boxes so that it's flush and level, so we don't have, you know, the students falling down into those. And then that's all in addition to, we have had elementary students out there and the high schools have been working with them. Which leads me then to the second section. So the elementary student involvement, so uh, besides third grade, fourth grade, kindergarten, fifth, sixth, seventh, all have come out, or excuse me, those are the grades that have all come out, third grade, fourth grade, kindergarten, first, sixth, seventh, um, or plan to. And we also have had several teachers that have started the process of adopting areas around the N R C. So for example, Ms. Ely, our sixth grade teacher, has, uh, determined that she would like to start working in the garden with students. And so she is going to work with students both in her classroom as well as out at the N R C on being able to figure out what we can be growing in the garden as well as how we can utilize it for some winter crops over the winter months. Uh, the next one, so what I'm probably most excited for is the community involvement. So um, Ms. Missfeld and myself have determined that October twenty-ninth, between nine o'clock and three o'clock, parents in the community are invited to come out and help with some of the more adult projects that need to be done, so some wood chipping, uh, some chainsawing and some overgrown trees, being able to um, burn off some of the excess wood potentially and being able to do some mixing and pouring of concrete, not any major things, but just a little bit patchwork. And so she and I have talked that we'll get the word out. You as board members also are welcome to come. It'd be nice to be able to show you all the changes. I won't put you to work too much for coming down there. It'd be nice just for you to see where we're at with things. Um, and if you have any parents or community members that you know might be interested, you can put them in touch with Ms. Missfeld or myself. And then that leads me to the last piece, so the outdoor school program. So moving forward, one of the focal points for the natural resource center is going to be providing outdoor school space for students from other schools. We've discussed that a little bit before, that it can be a source of revenue. It also can be a source of kind of helping our students to be able to take their learning to the next level. So I have met with the representative, Morgan State, who is overseeing the outdoor school program. And, uh, she has given me the green light to begin working on the process of becoming an official outdoor school site. So as part of this process, I do need tonight, it doesn't need to be an official motion, but I knew, do need a verbal consent to move forward in that direction so that the state knows that we are serious about that. And as kind of a nice bonus, um, my wife and I have reached out to make a connection in Chillicothe where we had talked previously, and they have already agreed to bring at least two-thirds, if not their entire elementary school over the spring to use it as outdoor school space. And from my early conversations with them, they are prepared that they would be able to pay something for that. So they came, they brought three grades out last year and they would like to be able to bring their whole school and make it kind of a traditional thing, that they come over once a year to be able to do it or potentially more. And so uh, once I have the green light from the board, I can continue my discussions with them about how we want the logistics to work. So that's what I'm looking for. And then any questions that I could answer for any of you. I know I went through a lot of information quickly.
Last month, you talked about some pending permits from the county. Did that get all done?
So we are still waiting on getting a couple of contractors to finish their work. So it's something that our goal is still on track, that's set for the end of the calendar year.
Cool, and I don't want to open this can of worms, but I'm going to. Volunteer Saturday, Ju- uh, October twenty-ninth.
Yes.
Volunteering. Dr. Long, clarification. Can people come? Is COVID an issue? What's the deal?
COVID is always an issue. We, this is a one-time event. So we're going to apply the rules that we would for a visitor. It's an outdoor activity. We should be able.
It's an outdoor activity, we should be able to do this, this is actually one of the blessings of having the type of school we have in the.
I asked this question already.
Oh, well then I didn't need that.
You didn't know the answer yet.
And now it's on the record, so we all knew.
Um, anybody else have any other questions? I make a motion to move forward with pursuing being an outdoor school at the NRC.
I second it.
Long favor?
So, uh, one more comment.
Yeah.
It's uh, great to see such a good briefing and your energy and involvement, and I will. In my mind, listening to you talk, make a comparison to Joe Sixta. This is great that you have, we have some new folks, new to me, new to us. You're breathing life into it and taking it places, so job well done, thank you for doing that.
I'm definitely enjoying it, it's something that I've said it quite a few times, and it's very true for me, this is why I'm up here, is to be able to work at the NRC.
Alright.
As soon as I had my interview and Doctor Wong took me out there three years ago, I could immediately start seeing different things come to mind. So I'm so happy I got the position for that.
It's great, thank you.
Good, yep, thank you, and if you have questions, feel free to reach out.
And October twenty-ninth, Adult Work Day at NRC.
Thank you.
I'll work on getting people out there.
That, I appreciate it.
Okay. Three point three superintendent report updates, Doctor Long.
Well, first of all, I'm, I'm happy to show you our enrollment numbers, um, we have our numbers, that's September thirtieth. Um, I was, I was in error, I said we had sixty-six students at the high school, we have sixty-seven, hundred and thirty at the elementary, that brings us right at one ninety-seven. Um, that's a good number to be at here, given um, all the challenges that we've faced. And um, a lot of activity, I think if you look at your two administrators, um, you're getting your money's worth, we're booked. But it's a good tire, is what it is. Um, uh, I appreciate having other staff to come talk about what our kids are doing. I don't know, Prina, if you wanna share just a couple of things that are going on at the elementary school, um.
Um, so I think our open house was, I would call it a success, I think, um, we had a really good turnout. And I was really pleased that we had multiple people from the community come out in, in our gym. So that students and families can, can touch base, um, we have like Project U Plus come out, um. I don't know, I can't remember, my brain's fried, sorry, but we had a bunch of people out there, we got information out. And I think it was a success, we are doing a jog-a-thon this Thursday with the whole school. Um, and families are welcome to come out, we kind of do a round around.
Right by my house.
It's like a square, it's around the front of the school there, so um, family committee are, are welcome to come out and cheer the kids on. Um, I'm really happy that we're able to start doing more activities, um, I think it's really great for the kids. Um, I'm working on doing some leaderships up with middle school, and I've gotten some of those things, so. I'm gonna have them really trying to take on some roles of. Helping with activities and assemblies and all that kind of stuff, so that's in the works, um. And we're gonna do some stuff for Halloween, some of those things at the end of the year will be coming up, so we've got a lot of stuff planned. And I'm really excited, I think things are going pretty well.
And of course, at the high school, there's all kinds of activity always going on, um, we do not currently have any sports at the high school. We are hopeful in the winter, um, the, um, for some wrestling and potentially some basketball, um, our AD. We're gonna be doing interviewing for a girls' basketball coaches here this week or this next week, need to get that going, is that correct? Boy, excuse me, boys, boys basketball, thank you. Um, and um, we're just pushing forward, trying to keep kids involved, um, and keep them safe. And that's a challenge when you're a really small school, then you gotta find other, other schools to interact with, so, um.
So what's the hangup with sports, is it enrollment, none of kids?
Enrollment, it's enrollment at this point, yeah.
So, of our enrollments, clearly. They're just not interested?
I, I, I think the impact of a pandemic and a year without school and not having uh, some of our uh, middle school. Uh, kids programs going, kids just kind of lost momentum for stuff like that, if they, if they had it. And that it, it is, so at the, in middle school, we still are able to field teams.
I saw these middle school kids uh, practicing football, and don't we have the task staffing for? The coaching of?
For high school?
Yeah.
We do, but you gotta have kids turn out.
They just.
We actually have five players and they're, we're cooperating with prospect.
Right for football, but volleyball, basketball, this.
Volleyball would be the season right now, and we, we didn't have enough interest.
And then we're not gonna be able to do basketball?
Well, I don't, I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna try, it, it's tough, gotta have players.
They really are. The middle school kids right now. They, the, the middle school kids right now are really into sports and a lot of interest. Yeah.
We kind of lost momentum with those kids in high school right now because there weren't the opportunities. And, and so.
So the opportunity there, yes, for basketball this winter, yes. All the infrastructure to play, the kids just don't wanna play, well, at, at this point where we are right now, that's the way it appears, yeah, wow.
And I, I've coached Aaron, I coached last year the different school, this is not, this is not a us problem, this is across the board. We're having a lot of tough times getting kids to come out, and it's other schools too.
They were actually, when I coached girls' basketball last year, they're like, how did you get such a big team, we only have like one team. Even like the big schools, they're like, I was like, I don't know.
But what I, what I would put alongside that, we are really finding engagement by our high school kids in the NRC. And, and I, and I do think that sometimes it's about focus and where kids feel they can make a difference. And where they can grow and be safe in it, you know, if you're a high school kid, you've never, haven't played sports, it's pretty awkward to go against other schools. Where kids have, you know, been in community programs and things like that. So, I'm, I'm not discouraged by what's going on for our high school, because it's just a bit different experience, and I'm actually really encouraged. By the fact that we had forty, we have forty-two of sixty-seven out there, and, and using one or two electric credits to be there, and that's pretty big.
And just, it's such a odd thing to think about, it wasn't that long ago that. We had, you know, tournament basketball, we had a strong, one of the strongest teams we've ever had. We co-op with, with, with another. I mean, at least we had something, and they brought all the parents in, we had concessions, we had, you know.
We're gonna get concessions going again, Mr. Bowers and I are working on it. We're working on it, it's gonna happen by basketball.
Yeah, but I don't like that, I don't like this, oh, in two years, we're gonna have a program.
When basketball this year will do concessions.
Do we have any gaps or holes in the coaching staff?
You know what, it, what the, the people are starting to come back and apply for coaching. Last year, our first year back after being closed much of the year, um, it, it was challenging. There were some people who stepped up at the middle school level, but, but a lot of people just in the, because of all that kind of scattered. Or dis- disconnected and just some of the rules in terms of people even engaging with us made it really hard for me to stay connected. Um, I, I think that is the other piece, I mean, it's not just coaching, it's teaching, it's teachers, it's support staff. It's how do you recruit and retain and support, um, when you have gaps and, and people who, um. Either have to move on or choose to move on because there's something more lucrative for them.
Sure.
Uh, what's helping us right now, sadly, for hiring close by is gas prices. And people are really having a way that, you gotta pay, I paid five and a quarter at Costco, which is supposed to be the cheapest place around, right? And um, if you, if you have to burn through three gallons, that you don't come any distance here and back. And, and that's post-tax, you know, that's a lot you have to earn before you're making money in the job, so. Uh, so I am pleased that there are people in the community who are stepping forward, applying, we had, we had some good applicants recently for a couple openings. And we just need to cultivate that and for coaching too, it's, it is relationship, relationships, so.
I guess I'd have the same, same question on uh, on the staffing side. We're up to almost two hundred students, which, where are we missing, what grades are we missing teachers in? We got blended grades, right?
We have, um, if, if you look at your enrollment sheet, you're looking at grades three, four and five. We have twelve third graders, we have eleven fourth graders, and we have eleven fifth graders. And so we have a com- combined uh, three, four and five as a standalone right now. And for the fourth graders, we are pulling them out and having uh, uh, other teachers teach them in the math and reading piece in the morning. And then the third grade teacher has all those students in the afternoon. But we did not, when we saw our enrollment, was that scarce, we didn't, then we did not fill a final, actually, we had trouble filling. Uh, a final position, and so we did some consolidating, and that has put some stress, some significant stresses on our elementary staff.
I've, I've heard some of those stresses, that's kind of why, so is it a, is it a? We don't have the budget for the teacher, or we don't have the people interested in the?
If, if we had, well, actually, that was part of it, we, we did not have enough applicants for all of our positions when we were hiring. Our, our applicants that if we hired, they would be able to, you know, ride the horse the whole year. Um, but when we looked at that three, four, five, we have another low group at, at uh. Yeah, that seems a little. And eleven, um, it, it's how do we, how do we make the staffing work? Um, and pay for it, you know, if I'm looking at the cost of a teacher for, you know.
Right.
Eleven kids, it doesn't pencil out.
Sure.
And then, um, we do have um, a, 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 a larger percentage, um, statistically of kids on IEPs. Than many, than the state average, which is about fourteen percent of our upper twenties, so we're having to need to hire more H to have help alongside that.
So I guess one, one concern I can share that I had when my students were here was. Um, well, in this example. Uh, the grade they're supposed to be in going down a grade for their education. And uh, you know, fourth graders going into a third grade classroom.
Then that, and that's why we have pulled them out for math and reading, because those are the core content areas that you wanna try to provide grade level instruction.
I just, yeah, I was, I was, like I said, I was sensitive to it, because I experienced it, you know, I was wanting my kids to move up. Um.
Well, you gotta, you gotta, you, you gotta remember that there will always be a lower and an upper grade.
Right. Right, and either way, you're taking. All those three classes are the same size, yeah, essentially, so, okay.
But we always make sure that they get grade level core instruction at their grade level, even if they're blended.
Sure.
So they're not gonna get third grade, fourth grade is getting fourth grade. We make sure, and, and even within that, we still differentiate because it could be high third graders.
Right.
So even a third grader could go do fourth grade math, that's what they need, or whatever it is, so you make sure that every student is where they need to be.
Sounds like, okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Thank you.
And of course, you know, our goal is to get back to where we have a single teacher for each grade level, um, and then that allows us to a lot more.
Sure.
Kids, but that's enrollment based, it sounds like.
Actually, it was applicant based this year, I think this decision was based on applicants, correct?
Here's what I could tell you, I could have hired another teacher, but we would be dealing with a different set of issues.
Sure.
It's just because the applicant pool is really thin. Um, in fact, neighboring districts right now are have, have openings, have substitutes in classes because they can't cover everything, so.
Uh, it is sort of generally speaking, there's a lack of teachers out there.
Yeah, yeah, and so when we have good teachers, we need to really work hard to keep them, but it's a stressful environment right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Did we, did we already do the staffing update, was that kind of what we were just on?
I think we kind of slid into that one. More tonight, or we, I mean, other than we had, you saw an exciting volleyball game before you came here, yeah.
It did go to the volleyball. Um, well, we did some interviews for some educational assistants on Friday. And we have a couple applicants, we're going to do our due process, reference checks and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, we're looking to hire one, possibly two, um, educational assistants, so that will help. In classrooms like third, fourth, or like seventh that are high, so those, you know, in, in, in front of them people where they need supports, so that will help us.
And we're file, filing in the process, well, we're at the final part of the process of hiring a permanent custodian.
Yeah.
Who, which we left along for two years without one, just part-time people and stuff.
Is it the one that's been working for us or no?
No.
Okay.
So, so you know, we're slowly building back the infrastructure, trying to hire people who um, will stay on the horse. Um, but also trying to keep other people in the saddle, whether in a really difficult time.
Okay, three point five, review of payment of bills. Anybody? How many questions about bills, I know Dan probably go well.
I want you to save Dan till last, because I like.
That's why.
I like to watch Rachel stay away.
I'm still working over here.
I had one, the second one down was uh, airlock and saved for forty-three, forty-four hundred dollars.
It was a rekey, um, for, um, I believe.
Elementary. And the high school and NRC.
I think it was every, yeah, all the buildings got rekeyed. And then additional keys for the new, um, safety gates and the new doors. And so with having all of that, they did a rekey.
When, when we, when we looked at our key records, so we've had keys out, um. There were like triple the number of keys in some areas that we had employees, and it's just because keys get checked out when people use them. And we just for security reasons needed to, to reboot, so that's what that's.
I didn't know if there was a, an incident or any event.
No, there was a desire not to have one.
Yeah. And since you redid all the new gates and doors, it was a prime opportunity to do the rekey.
Okay.
What is the second page? Noon or Davidson and Company?
That's your audit report.
They're checking you?
Yep, they're checking the.
Ten grand to check you?
Um, that's actually a partial payment, it's more than that.
That's a rack.
I have the same questions.
Rachel does a great job running the whole thing, and then this ESD is your, your company, right? I mean, that's part of.
Yes, those are services that, yeah, that you, that the ESD is providing, that's HR and my position.
Right, the state actually requires.
Yeah, I know, but there's twenty-two thousand five hundred for what you, you know. That's a large number for the services you provide. And then we have to hire another firm that checks more financial thing.
Seriously, we have to do it at the town.
Yeah.
How many times we have to have an audit? They're annually.
They're annually, and they're checking more than just, um, the financial components. They are checking student records, they check personnel records, um, they check the accounts payable. Um, but they're, they're checking everything.
Systems.
Um, and yeah, they have conversation.
Student records like grades?
Yeah, so they, no, not grades, so they have to check like your, their attendance records, so they'll, they'll pick students that have been checked in and out. And verify their records against what has been entered in our student information system. And that.
For pay.
Yes, and they're raised back to, yeah, so they pull all kinds of different data to ensure that we are in compliance with. With what the state says we're supposed to do and with the general accounting practices say we're supposed to do.
How we take in our money and how we spend it, if it's all reject.
Um, I don't remember, yes, I think so, um, the payment has gone up this year, um, I do know that. And we discussed that earlier, um. Yeah, every accounting firm has, and that is due in part because, um, they are having. They have less people to do municipal auditing, and so then if or it's taking them additional time. Plus, they're, they get audited.
On their audit.
On their, yeah, on their audits, so they have people. Um, I, I think they have a peer group that does theirs, um, that does their auditing.
Hmm, I know for us, like the state of Oregon, we, we do our audit. We send that all to the state of Oregon and Jackson County, and they look over it and. Decide they have questions or agree with it or whatever.
These get submitted, submitted to ODE.
Yeah.
And, and actually, the audit report, the, the, we contract them, but they're working for the board. They're not working for Rachel or the administration, they were, you, the, the auditing firm is actually, they're, they're, they're reporting back to you, that's why.
They're not working for Rachel or the administration, they were, you, the, the auditing firm is actually, they're, they're, they're reporting back to you, that's why in um, maybe November, I
Right, yeah, I'm hoping
They're gonna come and report to you, they have to by December thirty first, but they're gonna come and share that report.
Oh, I do, I remember they came.
It's usually Brandon, it's, yeah, it's been Brandon the last couple years, and now it's Kelsey.
Yeah, I take back my rack at common. They're doing important work.
Well, they are doing important work, and, and they're doing it at a better price than anyone else would define.
Yeah, necessary.
Yes, and, and at any given time, um, it's not in your board policy, but some boards have that, um, every three years you do a request for proposal, and you can find, attempt to find um a different um auditing firm, you're not required to stay with
We, we changed about four or five years ago, didn't we?
Um, yes, I actually, I think this is your three.
Okay.
So, potentially, if the board chose, they could um do an R F P. Um, I can tell you when we did it last time, um, we, I send them directly to the secretary of state, I, they're, they have an audit auditor list, um, I choose everybody from Portland to Medford. It usually ranges between about twenty on average that get individual invitations to do the R F P in addition to them being um posted in the newspaper, and we received two back. And the one we chose was significantly lower in price than the other.
And what's happening is, you may find this hard to believe, but municipal auditing is not the most exciting part of a county. So the field is shrinking as to who actually specializes in that, so you know, that's a supply and demand thing. That's going to continue to impact all public entities.
Yeah.
But if we were a larger district and the board was in a position about for a bond, this consistency in this report every year is what helps you with your bond rating, so for many districts, it's, it's, it plays that function, we're not in a, in a position to go for a bond, but.
It's just kind of a sticker shock when you see it, for sure.
Anything else? Not me. None there. Shall we defer to the Murphy?
Okay, page one at the bottom, eight thousand dollars for computer hardware.
I miss that one.
She had her list, so the, the top three questions Dan's gonna ask, and she missed that.
I tried, I tried to pick the ones every, every time that you were gonna ask, ask me about. They are computers for did you get a new laptop? I think these are administrative laptops, cuz there's only five of them.
Yes, mine's new.
Yeah, yours is, though, I think.
Trying to, yeah, I think these were administrator ones, cuz there was only five that were purchased this time.
You have to make a loss for the rest of your career, but
For now. Or refurbished new.
Okay, page two. The second one from the bottom is textbook department at thirty-two dollars.
It was additional to textbooks for some textbooks that we've already purchased, we didn't have enough to go around, so we purchased an additional textbook.
Oh, okay. Most textbooks you do not purchase for thirty-two dollars.
Yeah, right, and you're usually buying them as a curric, a curriculum adoption, but this is when we needed an extra one, so we purchased just one.
Thank you. Okay, now on page six. The U S cellular inter, internet for a thousand dollars, is that like an installation then?
No, we're still covering hotspots for um our students, so if we have to go to C D L, we're contracted for those, I think, until the spring, um, and then as the, as the contract starts to fall off, we will start um taking those
Bring it down.
Yep.
That concludes my questions on the financial. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Financial summary, Miss Akin.
Um, again, this one, I don't have a lot, um, this is as usual, which is good. Um, I did receive a note from the auditor today, and she just saved a list of board members, and she was preparing the draft, so I anticipate that in November. Um, she will be prepared to make the presentation. Um, I won't guarantee it, but it has to be before December thirty that, that is completed, and um, we try to present, you know, as soon as it's done, so we can get that out of the way. Um, in regards to revenue and expenditures, we haven't had any big significant items to pinpoint yet, um, you can see that salaries and benefits increased because we started the school year in September, so, um at this point, I don't have anything really significant other than the audit to report.
One observation, Rachel.
Yeah.
Is under the supplies, we have paper in our school year about a quarter, and we've spent almost fifty percent of our money for it. And it's just something we need to be aware of and be careful of.
Yeah, and that, and that's one of the ones that I monitor, and, and as, if you look further across the way, um, there's an eighty percent, including your encumbrances. Those encumbrances, I currently have a buffer in there, because at the time that I prepare the reports, I don't always know of all the purchases.
Right.
So I put a buffer in there, um, and I monitor that pretty regularly.
Right.
Usually at the beginning of the year, it's pretty heavy.
Right.
Because we're starting the school year, and then it starts to even out as we get towards
We use a big supply purchases and that come in in July.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
It's not uncommon to be heavy in the front and then start to, to get lighter as we work through the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else have questions for Rachel? Thank you, Rachel. Uh, three point seven, Julie, are you uh, the E S S A site council parent involvement report?
Yep, just pretty much moving on with the same things we discussed last meeting, getting the narratives in for title budgets, working on parental involvement, and um our integrated planning. And that's it.
Well, since we're talking about parent involvement, I'll just throw it out in a public meeting that I have funds that are sitting at my work at the town hall, that have been unused for like three years, it was our current money, and um, I'm thinking about using that to help get the concessions going for the school. So, help the kids get a startup on their concession supply. Some of it, a little bit of it. Okay, three point eight, um, Beat Falls Community School Partnership, Mr. Murphy.
We have hired a replacement for Bridget, that's Angie Ellis. As the director of the landing, preschool classes are continuing. And Angie is making changes at the, numerous changes at Landings.
I've heard.
And she is.
Good stuff.
So that's basically it, it continues.
And I would just wanna interject, uh, we had one of our classes go over there, they were studying the book, it's one from the high school, they're studying a book called uh Seed Folks, and it's the, the crux of it is a diverse community comes together, cuz they have a community garden, so they went to visit a couple of community gardens, and one of them was over at the landing, and I think that may lead into some other type of partnership between our, our, maybe it's eighth grade that's reading the book, and, and, and um, the landing, so I've, Angie has been really uh open and accessible, and she's followed up with emails and everything, so I see the part of the partnership um is becoming more uh tangible in, in that, and, and our kids, it's connecting with our kids, which is really what we want to see.
I'm, I'm working with the landing too, at the elementary school, where we've been talking, meeting multiple people, we're actually working on some wraparound services for students and families in the community to get um, some backpacks to go home for food and other supplies for, for families that may need over the, cuz we have a three-day weekend. Um, so I'm working with them, cuz they work with access and other, other um places around the county, so we're partnering with them for that.
Okay.
I like that idea, that's awesome. Three point nine, uh, public comment, do we have any public wanting to comment currently? Um, four point oh, old business, more point one.
You know, this is kinda just a really sobering moment, because we were talking and hoping to have an opportunity when Steve was available to come recognize him for his years of service, and we'd actually targeted this board meeting as an opportunity to talk about that. And I just wanna read into the record, the email, I think you all saw it, that I sent out to staff, and just share uh, a couple things, um, I, I only knew Steve for six years. Um, I did go to his memorial service at the Dan, and um, we saw the whole thing of photos, um, he's kind of a good-looking little kid, uh, kind of a, a mama's boy when he was little, and um his, his daughter was there, his son had COVID, and um, and then a bunch of relatives, a bunch of uh Scandinavian relatives showed up, he had quite, quite, quite the group there. Um, but what I, what I saw in all of that is, you know, we all, we all meet people at different stages of our lives, and I just felt really honored to have known him these last six years, and I just wanna read this in the record, and then maybe say a couple more things. Um, I sent this out to staff on nine twenty-seven, and by the way, Steve was born on September ninth uh nineteen forty-seven, so he had just turned seventy-five when he passed, passed on the nineteenth. Dear colleagues, I, I feel burdened to share with you the passing of one of our recent school board members, Stephen Nelson. Steve resided in Beat Falls for several decades, his kids, Scott and Becky, attended Beat Falls Elementary School. I think Scott graduated from our high school, he did, had that confirmed. Steve served Jackson County as an assessor for much of his working career. Upon retirement, he involved himself in civic matters, in recent years, he served on our school board for multiple terms, and recruited me on behalf of the board to come help in two thousand sixteen. He provided leadership for the board, serving as chair or vice chair for much of the six-plus years that I've been here. He gained great joy from purchasing sports equipment, shoes especially, that was used sports equipment, shoes especially for our students, and was a tremendous supporter of our charter school. In his healthier years, he volunteered to cut firewood rounds for students to split and sell and earn money for sports and clubs, in fact, I think about two thousand eighteen, he was given an award here in a board meeting as a volunteer, and but there's a lot of distinctions, I'm very proud of that photo, by the way.
I found that photo recently.
Yep, that, that was at a memorial service, um. Okay, um, he, he loved visiting around the valley and talking to others about our school and the cool things you all do with and poor kids, and he loved it when I could give them something that said Beat Falls on it, cuz he'd wear it then, cuz that was a conversation piece. He always managed to wear the Beat Falls and the school in his conversations all over the valley. Even in Ashland, several years ago, Steve was rear-ended in a serious auto accident, which broke his hip. Um, it did take him five days to decide that his hip was broken, by the way, just telling you, that's the kinda guy he was. In the process of having his hip replaced, he learned of another health matter that caused him to treasure life in Beat Falls even more. This past year, he fought and beat cancer. It was a battle that included surgery, chemotherapy, and radiation treatments. His doctors found him to be an exceptional patient, and he was given a cancer-free diagnosis, and I remember talking to him, it was like, okay, I'm, 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 I'm working these, working out, he's gonna get back and all of that. In late July, COVID came to the facility where he was temporarily living, he contracted it, and while it appeared he had overcome that, a week or so later, he developed a serious lung infection, and his health quickly deteriorated. I last talked with him via phone in August, shared texts with him thereafter. He passed Monday morning, nine nineteen, in hospice care at the hospital, the family sits here, they haven't had it yet, but he's gonna be buried at the Beat Falls, uh Falls Pioneer Cemetery. He specifically bought a plot that's near the road, as he expressed, he really didn't want to inconvenience people who'd wanna come by, they could just throw the flowers, if they're a good shot, I think it's, he's gonna have something to catch them, so that's Steve. Steve was a very private man, actually, and I know from my many conversations with him, that he would not want us to be sad about his passing. He enjoyed life and people, he loved his kids dearly and was exceptionally proud of them. He held strong opinions, and I think many of you are on one end or the other receiving those at some point in time about how we should treat each other and how we should live life, and in all of this, he would ask me, and this was a Steve question, how are our kids doing? He met, of course, all the students we serve. We're indebted to Steve for his many years of civic service. We've lost a servant leader and a friend, may we continue to do our best by the kids, he so cared about peace, Phil. The family um uh expressed to me in numerous ways their appreciation, you know, this board, there, there was a rule about Steve being on the board, and I know there was some question, we're going through a, a change, and he had to temporarily reside down in Medford. But being on this board gave him purpose, and I believe was really key to him beating cancer. And um he, he did, um, I think the last time he was at a meeting is when he, when, when I uh right before I shared his resignation letter, he was at our July meeting, and um, I think he was just bal, trying to balance whether he was gonna resume residing up here, or he needed to be closer down there, then of course, other things happened. And so um I, um, on behalf of the district, I've expressed to the family our concern, but I just wanted, uh, didn't think we could have a meeting without recognizing him in some way, and I'm like you all feel free to say something if you so choose, but I just wanted to make sure that got in the record.
I'll start, uh, Steve's the one that recruited me to this board, so um he's, I think, a good example of, of uh of what we should strive for, for sure, that he was probably the first and main reason I was excited to join, so.
Can't lose that mark, okay?
No, no.
I think I responded to your email, Phil.
You did.
Yeah. He's a, he was a great guy. Put a lot of energy and a lot of dedication into the district, so, though we missed.
Yeah, I felt very similar as Aaron, um, it, I've been on and off the board for quite a few years, Steve was here the whole time, he was always the chair. Um, spent, I have a little trouble, a lot of time um involved in the school, and he was, he's awesome.
Couple of words, Steve was dedicated and committed.
Yep.
And he spent a lot of time.
So this became his job in retirement, he really did.
Basically, yeah.
And he would drive to football games in Cannonville and other places, and give me reports on what if the rest became or not.
He would even put it in me. He was very, very involved.
There, he put it in me.
Yeah, very involved in his board division.
One last thing, if it was not for Steve Nelson and his help, we would not have the N R C now.
When I came on the board, you're right.
Yeah.
He was instrumental in that, wow.
Before my time, but I'm glad it happened.
But we went to Portland to get it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, five point one, Division twenty-two assurance reports to community.
Okay, on the, on the table is this report, um, I think you, uh, as board members are aware that there are a series of standards that are written into Oregon Revised Statutes, actually in the administrative rules that accompany them, and there's a a section that's called Division twenty-two, and it is standards for public schools, and there are more standards that are in this report. Over the last four years, the state has waived a lot of these standards. Schools have struggled to stay in compliance, just trying to keep the doors open and serve kids, and yet we're still required to submit a report every year assuring our public where we stand relative to these standards. Last year, we had, I can't remember, there was an area, and we, we addressed it in the run curriculum. Um, this year, we have several areas that we're not compliant in, but that's because these are areas that we're now having to report on again. And I just wanna point them out to you, I mean, you usually point about all the things you're doing right. These are the things that we're working on in here, this report um is to be presented to the board before November first, it's to be posted on our website for the public to see, and then I need to submit that with approved minutes to the state making, letting them know that we really did talk about this, so if you look through here in the category of teaching and learning, which is the blue section on uh page, the second page, uh, there's a thing about P E requirements for elementary grades and middle grades, last year we did not have enough instructional minutes in P E, and it was really specifically because COVID did not allow us to use our facilities like, like we had planned. And we had to have more distancing, we had more lunch breakfast times, and we could not literally get the cafeteria gym cleaned up, so we could have enough P E sections. We did last year have our middle school kids come over to the high school, so we, they could get their instructional minutes, but for the youngers, it, it didn't work. We have corrected that this year with the relaxing, more flexibility around the COVID mitigation requirements. We were able to adjust our lunch times, and occasionally the principal's in there mopping to make it happen, but, but basically But, but basically run three sessions of PE every day in the afternoon at the gym. We are trying to take advantage of the outdoors and part of that, but we know that when the snow comes, we gotta be able to support that. So I just want to let you know we were not compliant last year. We've corrected it and when we report on this next year, we will be compliant. If you look at the next page, and this has been a discussion by the board in the past, and there has been some my understanding is under the design of the charter school. We had more flexibility when it came to tag. But as I read through this and what the requirements are, I could not find a basis for not report, reporting that we're not in compliance with this. So there are a couple of sections on here related to talented gifted. And we will spend our plan this year is to review our existing procedures with the intent to reimplement, implement a tag program. So I want to let you all know that.
I've asked that question for several years and it's been the, the answer then, oh, we just integrated.
Right.
So you're saying now we're gonna differ.
We, we, we are going to go back and make sure that we have the pieces in place that would allow for identification. And then we can respond to identification if we find kids who are in compliance. And that, that means we need a tag coordinator and those types of pieces.
But there would be a separate program or eventually a separate program for tag.
It, it depends on what, what are, what our kids qualify and, and how we've responded. It really comes down to an individualized uh, tag pro, a tag response for each kid. And where that could be a program, I guess it would be one, but it's about extending learning or expanding learning for kids who are gifted in certain areas. And there are several different levels of giftedness. It's not just, you know, I'm a good reader or I'm a good, you know, I'm a good thinker. So, so that's a piece that we'll be reporting about to the board this spring as we pull up together. And then under instructional materials, I just had a note there. We we adopted K materials this year, but due to personnel changes and funding, we delayed the process of nine through twelve until this coming year. And we have a new English teacher and I've been working with her. She's actually looking at what's on the adoption list to see what materials we might consider adopting. And we'll, to be coming to you in the spring with a recommendation for nine through twelve of English language arts. And then if I can keep my order here, you can see there are a couple of things that were, that's reported for last year. So these were things that were waived in last year. And there's some things related to the kindergarten assessment. And essential skills, the diploma requirements, they waived that this last year.
That was just waived for the one year, though.
Right, right. Well, I, we're waiting for guidance, to be quite honest.
Oh, man, okay.
It's, it's been through twenty twenty four, so next year, the seniors.
I believe. Waiving those assessments?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the essential skills part of it.
Skills.
Yeah.
Such as, through two, four, you're thinking?
Yes, I'm almost positive it's through twenty twenty four.
If you look under the subcategory program and service requirements, this is where we hit the tag thing again on page five. And I basically have the same comment that we're gonna, we're reviewing and will, we need to rebuild this in the aftermath of COVID. And then if you look at page six, under high school diploma, we are in compliance for high school diploma. In health and safety, we're in compliance that are the categories they, they asked us to report on. And then subcategory plans and reports. We've been able to stay up on all the plans that we need to have for COVID. You all know that. And then on the, on the back page, on page eight, the asbestos management plans, this last year I went through to determine you're supposed to be on a cycle of every six years or so where you go back and review your plan. And that review did not occur in the last cycle. So we pursued a grant through the state to be able to contract to have a firm come in and do that. And it's not that we have asbestos all over where it's really making sure your records are accounting for the places that you do have asbestos and it's properly contained. Any construction work that we have had done, and you know, when we put new flooring in, we are using asbestos removal hazardous waste team to remove all that. So I'm trying to get as much as I can out. But once we find the right contractor and do this, then our record keeping will be up where it needs to be and we will be back in compliance with that.
We have spent a tremendous amount of money over the years for this asbestos removal.
And it's a challenge for older districts because asbestos was a common material. And there's a lot of good things that it does. It's just that people didn't realize that it wouldn't be conscribable. It's carcinogenic. Under category district performance and accountability under the, you can see it as a PE data about halfway down. We meet the, the information as far as recording our data and we meet at the middle school and high school level. And then next to the bottom, you can see that it says in compliance, but I put a note down here that says that I need to assure a compliance with public school standards. I just want to be absolutely clear that if you take into consideration the steps that we have for remediation of those areas that we're not in compliance, then we're in compliance. I mean, they allow you to, if you have a plan to be in compliance, but I didn't think I should just say not applicable there. And then on the back page, the last thing in the area of human resources and staffing, we meet all the things that we certainly aren't fighting it on class size. In terms of our personnel procedures, our evaluation processes, the mechanisms we're using, our, our teaching standards, meeting those, our, how we deal with our administrator standards, those are all related to evaluation and expectations and then fingerprinting key people and then the training regarding dyslexia. We have a person, we have two people actually trained for that. So I am formally presenting this to you and to the public as the report on compliance with public school standards, the assurances for last school year, twenty twenty one, twenty two. And I don't think it requires a vote or anything, but it does require an acknowledgement that you've received it. And then I'll go ahead and post it and wait for you to approve the minutes from this meeting next month and we'll get that all to the state.
So they know this last page, it states that we're meeting the core teaching standards.
Yes.
And it was just brought up about this, this assessment of essential skill diploma requirement. I'm pretty sure I talked pretty extensively last month about are our kids being taught and getting the core the core education out of the system? And what are you, what were you saying that we're waiving?
No, the state is what you did up until.
State dead, the state.
Right.
Your garden and.
We follow the state. So. So they're, they're waiving our requirement to do the essential skills assessment. Which is a part of it.
Right. CT, the state standard test, SBA, those things are supposed to be part of, they have to take it some time. But because of everything they wave.
Last month, we talked about, I talked about graduating seniors
Yes.
and having the minimum reading, writing and language skills. And we, I stated hopefully that this district is at least meeting that or above the state standards. And in the news, they're talking about lowering the standards. And then it kind of came into this. So are we we're going to adopt, huh? Where are we at? Are we gonna adopt the lowered standards for the next couple of years?
What we are going to do is we're, we're building our curriculum around the core teaching standards that they currently exist because that is the target. We are small enough that we should be able to do that, okay? That, but that being said, the state, it's really about what, how they determine you need to assess to say that you've met the standard. We're still teaching to the standard. So, so.
What is the state doing? What is, what is this? I, I use blip that I think Kate Brown or somebody was saying they're going to lower the graduation standards for the next couple of years in order to, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's two parts to it. And the state board has enacted, one thing they could do would be to reduce the actual graduation requirements. That's a lowering of the standard. Usually when they're talking about that, they're talking about the core content areas, so math, English.
Right.
We currently, in your board policy, have the current standards for graduation. And, and if you don't change that, that's what the standards are, okay? So, and I'm not.
With that, though, they haven't made an official decision to lower that.
No.
It's just being talked about.
But, yes.
It was a proposal.
It's a proposal, yeah. But, but the, the, the core standards for various content areas have been established by the, in the English language arts by, by English teachers. People who know for, for math, it's related to math teachers. For science, it's science teachers and scientists. And those are pretty much a codified set of what we should be teaching. That is what our teachers teach too. Yeah.
So the system is still such, and I guess I'll, I'll get to the point that I was trying to make last month. When we graduate our seniors this year, they, they will have a diploma that means something and they wouldn't have to necessarily go do remedial work at RCT.
If, if they have earned a regular diploma, they should be able to move on at RCC into courses if they want to earn a regular.
Upper, on an upward trajectory, not having to go back and go, oh, you know, I got this diploma, but now I have to go to RCC and take Math ninety five or Writing one oh one.
Well, I can't speak for the science because we don't require science of seniors in, in, in the graduation piece. But what I would tell you is we've, we've already made some changes this year so kids have more momentum no matter what. And that goes back to starting at eight o'clock with everyone else and having time in the afternoon to take courses or things like that. So I don't know that we're gonna see the immediate impact of that on this year's seniors.
But it's being up.
Yes.
It is.
They can do it, but as long as it's.
Right, right. But if, the way our schedule was before, we actually they didn't have the opportunity to hold it at school.
Well, then, okay, so Creamy, you mentioned like the SAT act, or is that not something we're doing now? Because like I have a senior and, and if you look into college, it's like you should do this. So do we have the opportunities to do it?
We, we have the opportunities. The challenge is that many colleges, universities are sort of rethinking that whole test score SAT thing. Yeah.
They did.
Some of them. A, a number of them, a number of them now.
Okay.
That's that you don't have to do ACT or SAT to get into college. Some kids still do it because there's other
Scholarship.
Scholarship opportunities and things you can get with them. But a lot of schools have decided that they're waiving those as part of the incoming freshman application, like as a freshman of college, yeah.
Do we have the opportunities for our high school students to take those if they want to?
If they, if they offer them in the valley, which they have, that they did last year and the year before, even through COVID, yes.
Do we advertise that to our high school student?
Um, that is part of the senior seminar piece that we do with them.
Yeah, so they, they totally can take them. We're not stopping them.
Okay, so they don't have to, but.
Have to anymore?
Like I have, I have a high school student that's like one of the quiet ones. So she's like, do I have to have this? I haven't heard about it. So I just want to make sure that the students at the school are hearing those opportunities.
What I, what I would tell you from my perspective, I would say, take the test. Just because I, it's another indicator that might make a difference for a kid getting in. But I'm not a college admissions person and many colleges are now not requiring.
Okay.
So, so it's about, it's about mo, it's about momentum. And about having a sense of, of how you measure up and what that means. So, you know, yeah.
So, so a lot of the, a lot of the reasonings on this are listed like with a PE and about, excuse me, because of COVID and is are, is that all resolved?
Well, and the note I put in here is the, the, the difference between you must and we highly recommend is a big difference.
Right.
We still are responsible for keeping our campuses safe and doing things that, that can mitigate COVID. But we're not required to do some of the things that made it physically impossible for us to offer all the PE. So, so where we have to do it, we have said we're willing to take the additional risk to do this because it allows us to run our PE program completely.
Yeah, and it wasn't just PE, also all of them that we.
Well, the ones, and the ones that waived even, the ones they waived were related to COVID.
Right.
But yes, Mark, I am making sure that they get, so depending on the grade level, it depends on how many of them it's a week.
Right.
And they're getting that and sometimes plus what they're supposed to get.
Okay. And sometimes you'd even step in and teaching the class to make sure.
Right now. Yes, they are all of them getting their PE because it's very important, I believe, helping these are important.
I do too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, the second item we have on here.
Are we ready to move on to the board policies? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yep.
So you did some of these policies, uh, two, two meetings ago. And I've gone through and it, they're starting to get longer and more detailed. And so what I have here is sort of the edited versions based on the choices that they recommend and what we're doing. And I'm just gonna read the policy titles and codes into this. We don't need to read the policies tonight. This will be considered the first reading of these, but it does mean you can take them home and read them through. And we'll actually discuss them more at the next board meeting, if you're okay with that.
I, I'm fine with that. So basically like the cast out ones, though, are we just not gonna update those?
We, we actually, we actually have updated a number of them, or there are ones that our current policy have not changed enough that we don't need to do that at this.
Okay, so we either have a policy in place or we.
Right. Okay, so here we go. From section G personnel, policy GBNJBA called sexual harassment and policy GBNJBA, the administrative regulation, sexual harassment complaint procedure. And then under GB, let's see if I can get this right, GBNA, policy hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing or cyberbullying. Staff hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing or cyberbullying report procedures, we have, it's a very, it's specifically for staff. And the AR, under a policy GBNAA JF, JHF, reporting requirements for suspected sexual conduct with students. Definitely want to have a policy here. And then the associated AR GBNAA JHF, suspected sexual conduct report procedures in form. And if you flip over on the back, there are a, a number of things related to this next one. The policy is family medical leave. That was just updated in the last legislature, I believe. And the policy is GCBDA slash GDBDA. There are two ARs that I have in your packet. There are more to, that we could include in there, but I didn't get a chance to review them all. And they are not a lot of changes. But one of them is the Oregon Family Medical Leave AR JC BDA, JD BDA, AR number one. And then the employee request for awful leave, which is the same code, but it's AR number two. And then we have further down, policy GCBB slash GDBB, which is early return to work. And GC BDC, GDBC, domestic violence, harassment, sexual assaultment, assault and or stalking leave requests for domestic violence, harassment, sexual assault or stalking leave. And there's an AR associated. So that is if we had an employee who was experiencing those, there's a mechanism for them to take leave. And then under criminal records, checks and fingerprinting, we just, I just figured we needed to update this to whatever it needs to be. And that's GGDA slash GDDA. And then the associated AR, which is GCDA, GDDA, AR. And then evaluation of staff, which is GCN, GDN. And then I actually think there's one more in there that I may have crossed up. The staff development one right above that, which is GC.
Keep in that?
Yeah, it's in the packet. I inadvertently crossed it up, but when I was copying, I saw it. So I have actually done more work than I thought. GTL, DDO. So, so those are the policies for you, you know, in your, that moment's pause to, to review and bring questions. And we'll talk them through. And, and we can do a second rating. And then if you want to move ahead, we can approve them and I will work to have some more board policies that you have at the next meeting.
We would be looking to adopt these at the November meeting.
You could, you could do that if you have a discussion. If there's something that you want more work on, we would just pull it out.
Okay.
Okay. I did have a piece of information that I, I wanted to insert here. So that's OSBA stuff. There's an opportunity on October, I gotta get the right date. Yeah, I think you might have got an email on this. October twenty fourth, that's a Monday at the Rogue Regency Inn banquet room. OSBA is having its regional legislative road show. I have to tell you, this was always a date with Steve and me. He went to these all the time. What it is, is OSBA is bringing their team to Metford for boards in this area. So it's gonna be the three county area. And they update you on, on their, let, what, what happened in the legislature, but also what they're, they're, they're looking, what the issues are, positions they're struggling, they're working through to see if they're gonna represent. It's a great time for you to meet the OSBA people who are representing board members to the legislature. And you get a good meal. And the reason why it's important to talk about this tonight is they need to know if you're going to come. And then if you're going to come, what you're going to, if, if, if you're gonna have dinner. And I think it's just like a, a buffet. So I don't think you get, you know, it's like, you know, orders, but, but they, but it is, you can see what it is if I pass it out to you, I guess.
Well, actually, I got the email. I wasn't sure if like the school, the school had to pay for us to go to or anything. It's free.
And what I would tell you, if we did, I'd still pay.
I was like, we set money aside for board trainees and.
Yeah, yeah.
That.
Don't we pay OSBA?
We pay a fee, so it's part of it. It will cover, it'll be covered.
I'm assuming it's Lori Shattonfield and Morgan Allen.
I think it's Morgan. I don't know if it's Lori or not. I don't know. Some roles have changed. So.
Do you want to know, do you know legislation, those two are your people?
Yes, ESD is actually making arrangements for the meal. So what I need for you to do is to let Julie know if you're gonna go. I will plan to be there to be your host. And it is, it'll give you a chance to meet board members from neighboring school districts too. So that, that's actually kind of timely, you know, just because we're regionally, we're dealing with some things that they might not be in other parts. So that that's actually kind of timely, you know, just because we're regionally, we're dealing with some things that they might not be in other parts.
So it's Clamath, Josephine and Jackson.
Yeah, Jackson. So it's the nine districts in in uh Jackson County and then the two in Clamath and the two in Josephine County, so thirteen districts.
Oh, we have to RSVP by Monday, you guys.
Yeah.
We do want to go do that.
By Monday the seventeenth, but but actually, what I'd ask is even before that, we make the decision to let Julie know. Because she'll do the RSVP for us all, because otherwise it drives me crazy when all the board members from different boards do it and they're trying to keep it straight. Julie will land you safely. So is there, I would say right now, is there anyone thinking maybe? I mean, we had fifty percent.
I'm thinking I would like to go.
Okay, okay, that'd be great.
I was trying to check what day the twenty-fourth is, that's Monday.
So so Julie is noting already your interest, but she's gonna come after the rest of this, okay? All right. Um, next item first, uh six point O. That we want to go?
Oh, yeah, no, you're right. Um. Extra duty hires, uh middle school football.
Now that middle school football's almost over, but just the way that it falls, we did um go ahead and extend a contract to Ethan Vasquez. But here's the deal, because it is an extra composition in the teacher contract. I do need board action to approve that hire so that we can uh approve paying him for the work he's already done.
To work, yeah, so I will make a motion uh to approve. Uh the the action of uh the hiring of the assistant middle school, middle school football coach.
And that was Ethan Vasquez.
Yeah, I wasn't catching that one, Ethan Vasquez.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I, there is one other thing that um came up at the last minute on Friday. And I, what I would like to do is to ask the board if we could go into an executive session to deal with a. Quoted bargaining item that has come up. And I I need the exact code if someone can find me how, we need to cite the specific. Uh reason for that, it's about a five minute discussion. If I could.
It's for the contracts?
It's related to the a contractual issue, and I need to consult with the board. Issue of collective bargaining. And it's ORS. I want to say one ninety-two O six two, but I'm gonna get around, then there's a letter, but I.
ORS one nine two.
I'm guessing.
Six six zero, maybe? Executive sessions permitted on certain matters.
Right, and so we need to have the right letter cited.
Hey, wanna pull, wanna look through it?
Sure.
Okay, so. I think in a minute, we're gonna. Uh not adjourn the meeting. We're gonna go reset the meeting, and I actually am calling for like a five minute recess to use bathroom and stuff and then go to executive.
Okay, well.
Session.
Okay, do you, maybe what you could do is you could do comments now.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
And then we could come back in the executive session and then in the meeting.
That's what I was thinking. So do we have any comments, future agenda items from the board?
I have none at this time.
Mark, do you have anything? Dan? No. No, I think I'm good too. Oh, wait, I still coming with the ORF you need. I think who's left of our audience, I think we're gonna.
ORS one ninety-two six six zero two D. There we go.
So you have.
After a five minute recess, right?
Yep, yep, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy. I know you are. I know you are. Well, I like you too, Billy, and by the way, thank you so much.